It was designed as residential and now we're turning it into, I know contrary to maybe what they want to call it, but it is a commercial space now with, you know, I know I live on Well and Septic and I could not handle forty-five people using the restroom every day and day after day. And I don't have Mill Creek running through the, you know, the bottom of my house. So I think that's a significant issue that that needs to be seriously looked at. And, you know, not all of these properties were meant to accommodate that kind of volume. And that is a lot of volume. And so there are people who are very concerned about the age of those tiles and, you know, what might happen and the fact that we do have Mill Creek running underneath, so.
Okay. All right, Frank, go ahead.
Yeah, I would agree with pretty much everybody's comments. The other thing I'd like to see if if we even consider going forward is having a little bit more buffer between, you know, and I walked the property, I never really saw the bridle path. There's like some big fields back there. But I'd like to see maybe a little bit more buffer between whatever activity is going to take place on the property and the neighbors and the horse paths and whatever else might be there. So it could be shrubbery, it could be fences, it could be whatever. But, you know, just to keep that distance and hopefully make the residents a little bit more comfortable, just have a bigger buffer area in addition to, you know, what everybody else said, so.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Sure, Kim, go ahead.
Okay, so everybody else has pretty much got through some of the things I was going to bring up. I'd also like to see if it were to be approved that we go about it in such a way that the special use would not carry with the property, but the nonprofit. Or we don't want it to be attached forever and ever. It's always it's always kind of a concern of mine if we do something special use like that. Again, I think, Sarah, you got a lot of things that you got to accomplish before anybody, and not us, even can let you occupy that as a school. It's going to be a big endeavor. So I think the only other piece, again, I went out and took a look at the property. I would like, I would recommend maybe a buffer between up in the front yard and the property to your east. Just an additional buffer there. I know that the fencing over there is locked and it's pulled, but it it is fenced. But again, it seems a little open. I wouldn't even maybe have the kids play there. Lots of other space, gorgeous space too, by the way. But so that's what I've got.
Okay, thank you, Kim. All right, anybody else, Teresa, one more time?
Just one last thing.
Okay.
I know there's been a lot of talk too about this, you know, there's these big buffers and there's all this, you know, foliage between the spaces, but we're looking at it in the summer. And there's a lot of leaves on this foliage. And I also went and walked the property and I'm very curious to see what it looks like in the winter when there isn't all the foliage and it's much more open. And the majority of the time that the kids will be there, it will be without foliage in the winter. And I I'm curious to see how, because now you look and there is a lot of buffer. I have the same thing at my own house where, you know, as soon as the leaves are all gone, all of a sudden you see all your neighbors again. And so unfortunately, I think we're going to be making some decisions before we're able to see that. But there's just, there's, there's a lot of things to take into consideration here for these neighbors. And I think they deserve this consideration from us so that we are making a good choice for them and and understanding, you know, putting ourselves in their shoes if this was our house and we had this coming in next door. I think that I I I love the idea of the school and I and I think it sounds like a wonderful idea. But I also, I I I agree with Frank that just maybe not here, maybe somewhere else and maybe somewhere else in the community where we could find that in, just not here, in my opinion, but.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Teresa. Kim, go ahead.
I guess this is a question for Jim Brown. So we've had two zoning changes within two-year period, right? The one that was changed from the one that we had in books that kind of mimic Kane County, which we'd had since two thousand and seven, that was underway for over nine years and it was approved on one twenty-four, twenty-three. So that was the prior one. It got revisited back in twenty-four.
Right.
Where the new one was approved and the zoning, the ad hoc zoning commission was put into place. Can you recall, because I didn't have time to look at the twenty-twenty-three from one twenty-three? Was the special use permit needed in the twenty-twenty-three version before the twenty-twenty-four?
For a school in a residential area? Yes, yes, that's the the ordinance that was in effect prior to January twenty-twenty-three listed schools as a permitted use in residential zones.
So you would confidently say?
If I'm mistaken, please correct.
No, that's correct.
And then, and we approved a new ordinance, a text of a new ordinance in January twenty-twenty-three. And we incorporated all of the permitted special uses into a table, which is the common way to do it now. And at that time, the the classification of a school from permitted use in a residential area to special use was changed.
And that was the one?
At twenty, it was January twenty-twenty-three.
So it would have been on the website in the fall of twenty-twenty-three?
Both of those ordinance were were up throughout the fall of twenty-twenty-three, yes.
The one that was being worked on?
Twenty-four, I'm sorry, yeah, getting my ears confused, yeah.
So in twenty, in the fall of twenty-twenty-three, would have been the only one approved from twenty-twenty-three?
I think they're both still hanging on the web page.
Yeah, yeah.
County and the twenty-three January.
So the one from two thousand and seven's still hanging up there?
It was.
I don't know.
When the when the new zoning ordinance was approved, it was placed on the website and prior zoning ordinances were removed.
So what, the one from twenty-twenty-four or the one from twenty-twenty-three?
When the twenty-twenty-four was approved.
I just tried to get the timeline down.
When the when the twenty-twenty-four zoning ordinance was approved in December of twenty-twenty-four, the prior zoning ordinances were removed at that time.
Yeah, I I'll add two points. It is, it's really a problem on almost any municipality's website. Documents get posted in multiple places. And then you 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 take one down and it's still up or links are broken, it doesn't work. That that's very common, it's not unique to Camps Hill, believe me.
It's not unique to a lot of places.
Right, yeah, yeah, it's, that that happens quite frequently. And also, as my second point now, it's, it's having, you know, I answer zoning questions, you know, every day. Several come in, so it's not, it's not untypical for someone to have difficulty, you know, reading or understanding things. I hope I don't confuse them more when they talk to me, sometimes I have trouble. So I don't think there was any effort by Ms. Elliott to deceive anyone. I think this was just really an honest mistake. I will say, there's a question that Trustee Uppensberger had. So when I found out, I was notified by the neighbors and I contacted, it turned out to be the applicant immediately. And I said, well, if you want to open this fall, you need to apply right now. And she must have submitted an app, I was in, I was overseas mid-May and I think there was an application when I got back, because the hearing was on June eighteenth, so there had to be an application in about twenty days prior to that because those letters had to be sent out, the newspaper ads got to be in fifteen days. So the application, I think, was waiting for me when I returned from overseas, you know, so. And she did that immediately, I mean, there was no, there was no, no bulking. And and the fact is, we do have, you know, we do have an applicant here now and and we're, whatever happened before, why it happened, you know, we do have an application now and we've gone through the the process, so. Just want to make that clear.
Well, thank you, I just wanted clarification.
All right, Frank, go ahead.
As I said, I I guess one one last question for me is Attorney Frank referenced some case law in Chicago Heights and River Woods, Buffalo Grove, where, you know, the village was overturned, zoning commission's recommendation was overturned. And my, I guess my question is to our attorney, and you don't have to answer it here because you might have to do some homework. Based on whatever decision we make, pro or con, to the school, could you advise us on what our legal exposure might be? And again, you don't have to do it tonight, but I'd like to at least get an opinion on that.
Sure, and that's something that, you know, if there is a threat of litigation by the applicant, then we can certainly, would be subject to a discussion in closed session. But absolutely, I mean, you're following the procedures now, you've had a public hearing at the PZC. You know, you're discussing it now, you will have the time where it would come for a vote. So you're providing due process to the applicant. As to the basis for your decision, that's, that's, that's where the analysis would would come in, so.
And for clarification, Carmen Longer, doing the legal review of what was filed by the objectors, the neighbors, that number, is is that factually correct, that that would require a two-thirds? The entire board?
I remember what I, but I think six or seven, that two-thirds is still going to be the same number, don't quote me on that. But, you know, we'll be sure of that before it comes to a vote. As to the the language of the statute that requires that vote, that is, that is correct. I mean, I haven't fully reviewed the petition yet, the objection petition, but as to whether or not I believe it's valid, because I just received it, but that it does require that vote. It's twenty percent of the adjacent frontage or the frontage of the property that is, you know, adjacent to the subject property. Just glancing at the objection petition, it includes, I believe, all of the properties that surround the subject property except for Ms. Elliott's property. So, you know, it's unlikely that there's a question as to the twenty percent being met there. Sometimes you see it where it's a, it's a, it's a street and the frontage is, is, you know, directly on on both sides of the property, but maybe not across the street. Here, you you have all of the property numbers that surround the property that have signed this petition. So probably at that twenty percent.
So two-thirds is a greater number than, if the board wished to overturn the Planning and Zoning Commission, it would take a supermajority, right, to overturn the PZC? So what's the number?
Some of the neighbors, which we're all very appreciative, very appreciative of all of them. But one was a narrative talking about, you know, what if they go and build a fence, a privacy fence, or put a bunch of vegetation, you know, I love my beautiful view in the backyard, now I'm going to be looking at a fence or a wall of trees, it's not what I signed up for. And without something like that, you know, I'm picturing myself in my backyard, there's a community garden right there. I'm relaxing in my private backyard and I have six people I don't know working in a garden right in my backyard. It would, I would like to hear from the applicant some sort of a proposal on how you're going to provide that seclusion to the neighbors. Because I don't have a good idea, you know, the neighbors don't want to see a big privacy fence. They like their view. I think that would go a long way with everybody around you if they knew how they were going to be as minimally impacted as possible, still use their backyards without having activity that they didn't sign up for, kind of right in their backyard.
All right, thanks, Nick. All right, we're going to move on. Thank you all for being here and know that we're, we're receiving all your emails and letters and whether you're for or against, and we appreciate that. And from today, it looks like September sixteenth is when it may come formally in front of the board for a vote. So just keep that, put that on your calendars. If it changes, just keep checking our website, we'll put it on the website. And, yeah, you're free to stay if you'd like, otherwise, oh, we're going to move on with our agenda. They didn't want to, yeah. I, does anybody want to public speak yet? I know I offered earlier and nobody seemed to want to. Okay, yeah. Sure, but you have to come up to the mic. You state your name and your address.
My name is Vince Kelly, I live on four N one five O Farm V Road. So the backing up to there, basically, Camps Hill Farm subdivision. I know, again, this is a very heated topic, I'm not going to waste your time going through all this stuff. I would just ask you really read about, read all the emails that everybody's sending you, take into consideration how the neighbors feel. There, there's not one neighbor in the subdivision that wants this because we all purchased there knowing this should never be an issue. So that's important to us. And then I would just like to clarify, she purchased the home in October twenty-twenty-four. So you're saying the ordinance was removed when the twenty-twenty-four was up? So I I don't see how she possibly could have even read the wrong ordinance, so, thank you.
Can I just show you this? This is actually.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Dee McDuffie and I live at four N one five six Country View Lane. This board shows all the noes in our area, it's depicted.
Oh, the voting.
Who wants to speak up? We got one more, okay, and then we'll move on.
My name's Dan Corr, I live at four N zero five seven Country View Lane. You've seen, you've seen my report I put together on the headwaters, on the Mill Creek Headwaters area, about the aquifer being right below. I just want to make a quick comment. I'm, I'm using Mr. Frank's letter that. Forty, you know, kids and student or and adults, that's still two thousand gallons of water every day going into the septic system, okay? And right into Mill Creek. The other thing I wanted to bring up was there was some confusion about the bridle path. Well, my back of my property, which backs up to that, horses have ridden back there. The pork camp children have ridden their horses back there, you know, as long as they've been able to ride. So there's no question that that, you know, that area is equestrian. They are competent riders and responsible, I let them ride back there anytime they want. The other thing I wanted to state quickly was about my prairie. I have a prairie patch back there that I've been tending for twenty-seven years or more. I have prescribed burns there every year, it's not purported, it actually happens. And anyway, there's a, there's a sentence in here that Mr. Frank wrote, says, "Mr. Corr's fears and concerns can be easily addressed by having him commit to also giving a school notice of his intent to conduct a burn." What does that mean? Having him commit? Is somebody going to force me to do that? Is that, you know, am I supposed to rely, you know, do I have to take on all that responsibility to notify additional people now that I'm going to be burning a prairie back there? And what are they going to say when I do? I mean, just recently, I've been walking back in my prairie, just walking on my prairie, and I've had the police called on me twice by headwaters people, just for walking back there. They have surveillance cameras back there watching my backyard. So how am I supposed to, what am I supposed to take from that? Having him commit? What am I supposed to do with that? That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corr. Okay, we are going to move on on the agenda and again, thank you for being here this evening. Hang in there for one second. You mean the next item on the agenda? Yeah. Notes? No discussion? On what, the next? Okay, we'll move on to discussion item seven C.
Quickly, I just wanted.
Annexation of properties on Harley Road.
I just wanted to make the board aware, we are still working with the property owners along Harley Road. They're still very actively interested in annexing into the village. We've looked at some pre-annexation terms and I think that we have a meeting of the minds at this point. So there could be a petition very shortly before you to start the, another public notice and a public hearing for those properties along Harley. Marshal that's behind that, that touches all the, a farm, large farm that goes all the way to Polley. So those, all those property owners are affirmatively desiring to come in. Carmen's working on that agreement and you should have that by September second as a potentially coming before you to set a hearing date.
Okay, Teresa, go ahead.
Okay, so just, you know, we've talked about this a little bit, but with the, the bridge coming in and the, I know we talked about the TIF and, I mean, what happens if our, if the TIF gets denied? I mean, this, this is a, you know, it's a kind of a big potential liability, right? So are we, are we agreeing to annex it in before we have an answer on the TIF or are we?
Yeah, you would, well, the annexation for September fourth on the larger parcel, the Ryan property.
Yeah, that's different, I think.
That would trigger the village owning Harley Avenue and the bridge as well. So in both instances, we would end up being.
So either way, we're committing to.
Any, either annexation.
Harley and.
That's right.
Right, so I'm just saying we're, we're committing to Harley, whether we have a TIF or not and we are accepting the liability of that bridge.
Because it will transfer from the Blackberry Township to approximately estimated one point eight to to a double if it's ten percent cost share for the village.
And who is the cost sharing with?
This is federal government.
Federal government.
Yeah, that, you know, the different road projects, sometimes they're eighty, twenty and ninety, ten. This is a ninety-five, five.
So we think, I know you said earlier that you think our exposure is two to four million?
Two to four, roughly.
And do we have that in our budget? Do I, I mean, do we see that as something?
No, it's, it's, funds would be unrestricted fund balance or would come out of the ten thousand five hundred impact fee per house. But that will take a while to achieve those numbers.
I just think we have to really take.
No, and the bridge is not, the bridge is not needing to be repaired. It's repaired, not taken down and rebuilt, it's repaired.
If we do nothing to it, is it just a, we're closing it off and there's no cost?
If, if the bridge was petitioned at the ICC to be no longer needed because Bunker Road underpass is in effect.
Yeah.
And will be largely constructed by November of this year.
Okay.
According to KDOT and their contract with the developed engineering, you know, company they've hired to build the bunker road. I don't, judging where they're at today, I don't know how they're going to get it all built by November, but, you know, they could. And then you could, as a village, you could petition as the ICC to call the bridge redundant and no longer needed. And the Union Pacific would most assuredly be at your side as a village to close it because they don't want the bridge over their rail freight line if they can ever afford it. They won't necessarily pay for it to be removed or repaired, though.
So, and I, I'm kind of backtracking here on just the TIF in general, but, so how does the, how does this work where it becomes the village's expense when basically it's, it's really, well, I mean, I guess it's benefiting the developer, correct? Because we're, we're going to be, I mean, he needs it to build the nine hundred homes.
No, no, the, the.
The TIF for the, for the water reclamation.
The, the bridge has no benefit per se to the development of nine hundred proposed houses because they would access the existing La Fox Road, Kestlinger or bunker.
So there's no even sharing option of any kind, like there's no benefit to him at all, the developer at all, to this bridge? It's a hundred percent us, like you, it's.
Yeah, because it's a hundred percent currently in effect to the Blackberry Township Highway Department. And we would take that over if we annex either these agreements.
I mean, you can use the bridge right now, I mean, I went over the bridge today.
I've just been over it, yeah, actually.
There you go.
Yeah.
The Illinois municipal code regarding annexations indicates that if you, you annex to one side of a right-of-way, you get the other side.
Sure.
As to your question is, you know, they, you know, it's a, it's a public road. It's not, it's not a piece of village infrastructure that is, is, would be contained within a development. And just because it's adjacent to what is land that is proposed to be developed, it might be a stretch to say that, that the developer would have to share in that, in that cost to potentially repair it or replace it or remove it in the future. That being said, if there are other public improvements that need to be made adjacent to the development, then yes, those are, those are oftentimes included in, inside of a PUD as developer requirements to be paid for or constructed or in a redevelopment agreement if there is a TIF. To, to one of your earlier questions about, you know, the necessity for a TIF because of, you know, I think you said, because this is going, it sounds like it's going to help the developer, yes, but.
For the water, for the water treatment facility, so I'm just, I guess I'm, I.
Water and wastewater.
Water and wastewater. I mean, it's my understanding that the TIF has to go through the municipality, correct? So, but, but why are we paying for all the fees and everything to?
That is, that's included in the escrow, the developer will pay the thirty thousand as we incur it, yes, yes.
And that.
Just as they're paying for part of my salary devoted to that, all of Carmen's time and the engineering. That's in the escrow, yes.
Okay.
Right, so the, and I described just, just a bit about kind of the second step that the TIF consultant will be working through. First is just the feasibility itself for the land, is the land TIF eligible, the boundaries of the property. It was, was kind of alluded to earlier, but nothing that has, any of the lands that are proposed to be sold to open space groups would not be included generally, at least within the TIF. We're talking south of Mill Creek, west of Brundage Creek, things with dwelling units on them or open spaces that are, you know, privately owned open spaces, that, that would be the confine of the TIF, confines of the TIF. The second step that, that SB Freeman will have to perform is, is determining the but-for test. But for the creation of a TIF and potential reimbursement of some of the developers' costs that are allowed for under the TIF Act, would this development not be financially feasible unless a TIF were created?
Okay.
So if it's just, oh, if we create the TIF, the developer is going to profit more, then oftentimes that fails the but-for test. But if it, if it is, there are, you know, I'm just making up numbers, if there are five hundred million dollars in expenses and the estimated profit is only two hundred million on a project, then obviously no one would develop it, develop it unless they had the assistance of a TIF district to, to, to reimburse those expenses or, or some of the expenses. And there are a limited list of what, what can be.
How does Mill Creek fit into all of this? Because, you know, they've kind of, you know, they've sent us letters and other.
They are a taxing body, actually, that does levy a tax over the farmland currently, but they.
Do they have to be a willing participant in this or is there some? Because I had, I think I had heard Dave say something about, you know, they have the rights to the capacity that's left at, at Mill Creek or something to that effect because I've also heard other comments that, you know, Mill Creek is not like real. Because I've also heard other comments that, you know, Mill Creek is not like real thrilled after the most recent lawsuit to maybe work with them on another project. So, how, how are we like assured that Mill Creek will work with Shodin on this project?
I, I think that the developer probably still has a lot of conversations left to have with, with Mill Creek. And certainly I think the village will too. I think that, you know, that obviously they're going, the, the question of capacity is going to have to be worked out before the developer decides whether or not he can move forward. And whether or not the village's board is in support of a PUD because there has to be capacity somewhere.
So, we don't necessarily have an assurance from Mill Creek at this point?
You have Mill Creek's letter saying that they need, in their rough estimate, early between 20 and 25 million dollars in upgrades to the two systems in total. And, and he has stated that he'd like to come and discuss that with us. And possibly he will be, the lawyer for the district will come and discuss that.
Have we had those, any discussions with him?
No, he's, he's, he's trying to get his schedule clear to come and see us.
So, do we think it's at all premature to be hiring someone to look into the TIF district if we're not even sure that we have the water treatment, you know, district on board?
The, so the first. The first step of the.
I took it back to this other, I said, I'm sorry that I'm taking it back, but since we're talking TIF. That's, this is Janet.
We're, we're looking at TIF eligibility first before you actually establish it.
I'm sorry. Say that again.
You're doing a TIF eligibility study at this first, up to 30,000? And after you see that report, then you'll decide whether you want to be committed or not. By that time, we should have negotiations with.
So, we will be pursuing discussions with, with them because, you know, reading some of their correspondence, they don't seem real thrilled with, you know, with working.
Yes, yes.
No, I've had preliminary discussion with the TIF consultant regarding that very question. And at this point, it, you know, they're in a holding pattern until, and they, they complete their eligibility study work. If that is, you know, if that, if there's a green light on that and the village board is comfortable moving forward, then, you know, we anticipate probably by that point, we, we might have an estimated budget from, from the water, water reclamation district as to what the, the upgrades are required. Shodin might have an, at least a general idea of what their development plan and budget's going to be. Because those are the things that are going to have to be then submitted to the TIF consultant for review if their, if their scope is expanded to do that work, which I imagine that if the village is comfortable with the, the work they did on the eligibility study, they'll want them to continue working on the project.
Okay. Thank you for your, for the explanation. Appreciate it.
All right.
I just wanted to make sure you're abreast of what's going on and how they do tie to this other thing that you approved tonight with SB Friedman. No other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
That was my question.
No.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No more additional, anything from president, trustees, attorney?
Can I just ask on the comprehensive plan? I know a meeting or two ago, we talked about some adjustments up in the Play-Doh area. There were some discussions and then it was put on the agenda again tonight without any real changes. Are those concerns that some of the trustees had going to be addressed?
No, unless you consent us to do any item in there or add to, it will be amended and added to before you, and make it effective when you vote on it. And that's where tonight, under discussion, I was hoping to clarify that, why I had Mr. Brown here to hear it. So, he could start doing his behind the scenes work and, and be ready for a September adoption meeting.
Yeah, I think we're all, I think we're all a little confused as to what was happening.
So, any, any issues that any of the board members have, please feel free to. It would look like if we, a document to, to adjust to that. Is there anything else, Jim?
No, I just, I just want to say, so I made some corrections. Trustee Murf forwarded some corrections to me. I think I got all of those. I find an error every time I look at the document, you know, I can't proofread my own stuff. So, if there's anything like that, I'd be happy to incorporate it in. If there's anything of substance, you know, I'm reluctant to change that without a board discussion, but I could certainly note that and put it in a staff memorandum so it's there for everyone to see. So, if there's some, some language of substance, you know, I could, I could work that into a staff memo and then it could be discussed and I'd take that direction on whatever you decide.
As a, as a group, when you direct it. And, and we can check if anybody's asking for something that would necessitate or trigger. I don't see what could be, but there could be something that would trigger us to have to do another hearing. But as long as, I don't think that there's anything of that substance being debated or discussed, so. But that's why I say Forte's got to look at it because if it triggers it, I want him to tell you early on.
How can we consider the comprehensive plan in depth when we're trying to do all this other stuff? Trying to do the annexation agreement? We've got a MAB amendment coming up if we pass the annexation agreement with a PUD hearing all on a very compressed schedule because all of the buffer time is already gone. So, I'm not sure when the, when the special meeting time or, you know, would, would the workshop time or whatever would be to do this in the next couple of months.
Well, I think when you refer the PUD to the Planning and Zoning Committee to take their action to review the PUD, you'd have time because you're not addressing the PUD. You're referring that to the Planning and Zoning Commission and then reviewing their work.
And so, we're looking at.
September and early October, at least, would be the Planning and Zoning Committee looking at the PUD. You wouldn't be getting it back until the end of, middle to end of October.
So, that, I mean, that puts us, you know, four to six weeks out from being able to really seriously consider the comp plan, I think.
Well, I think you could work on the comp plan in September and early October when you didn't have the PUD in front of you. But it's, you know what? I propose, you guys decide.
I just think that the only thing that.
You did tonight, you didn't take it off the table.
The only thing that would require another public hearing is if the 90-day window after the, after the public hearing occurred is, has ended. And that was.
July 9th or 10th, something like that, I think.
I think so.
Yeah. I'd have to check.
You're about midway through that.
Yeah. But since we started discussion on it, doesn't, it doesn't, we have to be done in 90 days?
The village board has to take action on it.
Within 90 days of that. So, we'll put that on the next, the next agenda for discussion with that date. And then, you know, having another public hearing is not the end of the world.
No, it's not. But if you want to avoid that, then we need to workshop this as a board, I think, and have a committee of the whole meeting or something to be able to, you know. It can be part of a regular meeting. We can do our business, pay these bills and everything and then spend the rest of some meeting, you know, hammering this out.
Jim Brown, can you send to me and then CC the board of your dates that you're going to be available if we chose to do a workshop just on the comp plan?
Almost always available.
Except, except what dates?
Well, first, first Thursday of the month.
You can't do it.
Is, is, I have a commitment. You're not going to do it on a Saturday, so.
Or a Friday.
No, no conflict with the band.
He's got band on Friday and Saturday.
So.
And the first Thursday.
No, I mean, I'd say whatever, whatever you want to do it.
So.
I, I was just going to also add, if we do have to have a public hearing again, then maybe we'll actually get some public comment this time. So.
True. All right. Motion to go into closed session.
For the purposes.
Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees or contractors. Anything else?
Under 2C, 2C 1 of the Open Meetings Act.
Oh, okay. So, motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Nick. Second by Treese. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
And we will have no action over, after.
No action afterwards.
So, I'm turning, do I need to turn that off before a closed?
...